I don't know. These are just, who knows? They're here to see their friends. Okay. Are we ready?
Yep.
All right. I'd like to bring the North Hampton County Council meeting to order with a please rise for the pledge led by Ms. Lori Vargo Hefner.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. All right, roll call.
Mr. Kuzick.
President.
Mr. Dietz.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Warner is absent and Ms. Zerinsky.
Here.
All the present except Mr. Warner.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is approval of minutes for the January 2nd, 2018, and January 4th, 2018 meeting.
Moved to approve by acclamation, Mr. President.
Mr. Kuzick, second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Courtesy of the floor, I have a few people signed in. First person, courtesy of the floor, is Mr. Jeffrey Fox from Pen Argyle.
Happy New Year to all of you.
Happy New Year.
And congratulations to the new ones on council. And you befuddled me because Linda used to be over there and the slit used to be there and, oh, anyway. And Peg gets to grace yet another photo on the wall of county council. Anyway, I indeed share Lamont McClure's hunger for civil county government. Political partisanship should not have a public face in county government, especially during public county council meetings. Mr. Kraft has not always set the example for civility on council, and as the new president of county council, that indeed must change. Bring about the profound change dictated by the election results. Mr. McClure and county council must lead by example. If you believe the public is hungry for civil county government, please feed it to I also hope, as do all of us, for a competent, contemplative, and civil county government. My wish is for a positive and prosperous path for North Hampton County. To that end, transparency is important in governance at all levels. That is why I'm concerned about the blatant violation of the Sunshine Act at the January 9th meeting of the North Hampton County General Authority. There were those of the GPA who should have known better. The violation has been substantiated by one who was in attendance. And it is my understanding that Mr. McClure and Mr. Kraft appeared at the meeting and therefore may indeed be aware of the events which transpired. That has not been confirmed as, to me, anyway. The violation which occurred needs to be addressed. I would also like to express my disappointment with North Hampton County Council and their vote to commit $10 million over 40 years from hotel tax revenue to the Da Vinci Science City proposed project. I am not opposed to the project. I am not a naysayer. I agree indeed with the emotional sentiment, forward thinking, as well as the potential benefits of the proposed project to the future of North Hampton County. However, currently, this project is simply just a proposal. It is not fiscally responsible to commit monies over 40 years, 40 years, to a proposed project which is not even definitively coming to the county nor knows what it wants to be. That's a hell of a lot of money and time to invest into a project such as this, which at this time is solely based on the as-of-yet-unknown and unproven supposition that it will increase hotel tax revenue, $10 million over 40 years. We should be about promoting the great outdoors, the nature dome we already have throughout North Hampton County. I think council and North Hampton County can give the Da Vinci proposed project the cachet it is looking for within a more reasonable and responsible framework. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Next person on the list is Susan Repert from Fountain Hill.
Hi. I asked for time to speak tonight related to the nomination of Sue Wondolowski to the Director of Human Services. I've known Sue professionally for more than 20 years. For 10 years, I was her supervisor, and then when I flunked retirement and came back, Sue has been my supervisor for the last four or five years. So I kind of have a unique perspective on her work. I think those of you who have had the pleasure of meeting her know that there is nothing stuffy or rigid or autocratic about Sue. And I would just ask that you not be fooled by that breezy and airy persona because she, while she doesn't take herself very seriously, she does take her work very seriously. I feel very, very comfortable in supporting her nomination for this position. She's really accustomed to working in a heavily regulated environment that's very accountable to inspections on a pretty consistent basis. She knows the pressures of having more work to do with less resources to do the work. And she'll find a way to work smarter and not cut any kinds of services. She's nominated for a very big job, and I think she's not going to pretend to anybody that she knows all the answers. And she's never going to tell you that she knows something if she doesn't know it, but she will always, always, always do her homework. She's a very highly principled person, and I was in management for over 40 years, and I can very comfortably say that I don't think I ever had as honest an employee as Sue. She will give you an honest answer sometimes whether you want it or not. But she's very capable of doing this job, and she'll do it with grace and with dignity and respect. And I would just encourage you to feel comfortable in voting positively for her. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I have signed up on the list is Ms. Lynn Erickson from Easton, PA.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ken Kraft, and thank you to all council members. I appreciate the opportunity to provide a brief update and speak to all of you. As you may know, the Da Vinci Science Center and the city of Easton held a meeting on Tuesday night to share concepts developed for the facilities and exhibits master plan for the Da Vinci Science City project. The development of the master plan is an iterative process. The Science Center worked for over a year with the former council to study the benefits of and return on investment for the Da Vinci Science City project. At the suggestion of county council members, we conducted public meetings throughout the county to share plans for the project, answer questions, and collect feedback. The facility and exhibits master plan is reflective both of this feedback from the community as well as feedback from educators, community organizations, and our funders. The concepts developed within the master plan will deliver to the city of Easton and the county of North Hampton a world-class science center that's distinctive and compelling, an economic development project that generates a strong return on investment, and an educational resource that will benefit the community for generations to come. I don't have time tonight to share the plan with you. Having read last night's article, also this morning, in the Morning Call, I urge you to take more time to learn about the full details of the project before taking any action on funding. I request an opportunity to brief all of you, but especially those of you who are newly elected, so that you can fully understand the benefits that this project will deliver to North Hampton County. Tonight, I'd like to leave you with a few renderings that were developed for the master plan that we shared initially on Tuesday evening. So if you take a quick look through what I've just passed out, you'll see the front shows the street view as you're approaching Da Vinci Science City with the iconic 100-foot man and the ramps that you will walk through immersive experiences as part of the Vitruvian human body experience. The second page introduces you to three core exhibit areas, which we have actually always had. Science and Me, which represents the iconic man. The Science and Technology, that's a smart city there, and those kids are exploring potentially the power grid or how the city might be more energy efficient. And the third one shows kids with butterflies. That is the Science and Nature exhibit. The next rendering is of the body and gives you a little bit better look at what the experience will be in terms of walking through different areas, walking through the spine and neck. You might be studying about the brain and the spine. Walking through the chest, perhaps it's the respiratory system and the circulatory system and so forth. And then there'll be many interactive exhibits, including plastinates and the galleries at either side of the ramps. The next page shows the concept, the new concept, not the aquarium, for the Science and Nature area, which is a nature dome, which is an immersive environment inside. It's bringing the outdoors inside. The main component is the middle piece there, which is a forest at night. The other components are going at the headwaters of the Lehigh River and starting to learn about the glacial bog. There'll be a glacial bog, have some fun up front and personal with river otters, talk a little bit about the formation of the glaciers, a waterfall. And then the other, to the right, it shows an insect garden. You see, there's a close-up picture of the forest at night. You can imagine everything from bats. We'd like to recreate the mine cave that's in Bucks County. They won't be flying in your hair, but there can be acrylic between you and the bats. The potential for having bobcats up in the upper left and lower right, there's some bobcats, there's raccoons, but you'll be in this, we'll reverse the clock. So if it's morning, when you enter this night exhibit, it will be night to the animals. And you will walk slowly and experience the sights and sounds. You might need night goggles, you might need infrared lighting. And then the last is just the iconic experience within the Science and Technology area will be a factory floor, and we'll develop that in partnership with a lot of our area manufacturers. We think that will be really important in helping to fulfill those jobs. So I thank you very much for the, oh, and sorry. The last page after that is just a quick example of some of the other places we've looked at. There is no experience like the nature dome on the east coast. The closest would be Montreal. There are night exhibits, it's a proven concept, in Omaha and Cincinnati, and the Seattle one closed during the recession, and they got such a human outcry, they're now investing 14.9 million in bringing it back. So it's a proven concept, but it will be more distinctive, I think, quite honestly, and compelling than an aquarium because there's nothing like it. And I think the 100-foot body will do the same. We expect to complete our work with the architects. We're still doing, you know, working a little bit further, but the majority is finished over the next few weeks. And then these renderings can be used for a market study. You need to have pictures so you can show them to consumers to see if they're interested, and they can compare it with other venues. This is an iterative process. Then we have business planning. We have a lot more work to do between now and June at the conclusion of the master planning period. In closing, I request that we have the opportunity to fully brief the current council and administration, the new administration, on the project before a decision is made to revoke the legislation. We believe that we will create a science center that is unlike any other in the mid-Atlantic region, and we ask that council fully consider this opportunity.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Mr. Daniel Theory from Nazareth, PA.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Tina Smith, the nominee for Director of Community and Economic Development for the county. Tina and I have worked together at the Nazareth Area Chamber for 11 years and a shorter time at Nazareth Economic Development. Over that period of time, respectively, I've been chairperson and president of those organizations, so on a volunteer basis, I've been Tina's boss. And I'd like to share my experiences with you in that capacity, working closely with Tina and observing how she works. So I would say that, first of all, I would, my Exhibit A would be the Nazareth Area Chamber of Commerce. This has not been, the last decade at least, a very favorable environment for independent chambers. They have been in a steady state of decline and have many that have disappeared. The Nazareth Chamber faces all those same challenges and yet has flourished and grown. And that is due to Tina's leadership. And as sure as I'm standing here, she is the reason why the Chamber has been successful. I'm equally confident that she would never take credit for that, but nonetheless, it's true. Some of the reasons I believe that to be the case, from my observations. She's a very dedicated, hard-working individual. It's a salaried position, there are room for advancement, nonetheless, she routinely works nice weekends and long hours to keep up with the work. In fact, something I probably took for granted until I was thinking about this, despite the frantic pace of the Chamber sometimes, Tina has always managed to make sure that everything gets done. Things never fell through the cracks. There weren't complaints that routine tasks weren't handled or crises that arisen because some peak workload meant something got missed. I have never heard a single complaint about that. She's a very collaborative person. She's excellent working with teams. She's as comfortable in a support role as she is in being a leader. She has a real talent for developing those teams and motivating people. But most of all, when I think of Tina, the thing that stands out to me is her dedication to serving others. It's exhibited by her career path, and I see it exhibited all the time in how she actually helps people. Tina, if anything from a tourist walks in the door with questions about Nazareth, to a business wants, the new business wants an event, to some established members looking for something, Tina has a way about her that she will make that person feel really valued. She will go above and beyond every time. She will really go out of her way. And this has always built great reserves of goodwill with people and is, I think, the secret ingredient, if you will, to Tina's success and the success of the Chamber as a benefit of that. Some other notable achievements I've seen with Tina, she's very good at organizing events for the betterment of the community and their enjoyment. One example is Martin O'Main Festival's been running for 11 years. Tina runs that. Last year, that brought 6,000 people from all over the world to downtown Nazareth. So that's been a great event. And another one is, in what few times she has, Tina runs loaves and fishes and created a soup kitchen to feed people in Nazareth, which has been running for years, and I think is a further exhibit of her dedication to helping others. So I hope that you will confirm her for the position, and I believe if you do, you'll be happy with the results. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Theory. That's all the people that signed up on the sheet. Is anybody in the audience wish to address council tonight? Seeing no one else, moving to the next part of the agenda is the County Executive Report. Mr. McClure?
I don't have any report.
Thank you. Old business. Any old business to bring to discuss tonight? Seeing none. Right into new business. First thing we have on new business is consideration of the County Executive's nominations. And the first nomination we have is Director of Administration, personnel met yesterday, and I believe everybody was here. Peg couldn't make it because she was not feeling well. But I think you listened in and watched us, didn't you? Okay. So I'd like to ask Mr. McGee to introduce the resolution for Director of Administration.
Okay. The first resolution is be resolved by the North Hampton County Council that Charles M. Dirtinger shall be confirmed in his appointment as Director of the Department of Administration at a pay grade Group Six, Step Three C, salary $102,242, effective January 18, 2018.
He's so moved. Okay, thank you. So moved. All right. Pardon me?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
I kept getting emails today. Every time I got another email, his salary went up, so.
Well, I'll let Mr. McClure answer that. That's Scribner's error.
Scribner's error.
Scribner's error.
Yes. There was some confusion. Unfortunately, I caught it after we sent the paperwork over. And it was, then, Human Resources came to me again and said, no, that's not the proper pay grade. This is the proper pay grade. And so we figured it out, and that's what you have now.
Good. Thank you. He will earn every penny.
He definitely will.
Mr. Kuzick?
Just a quick comment. I did support this yesterday when the salary was on Step One A, and I did some research, and that was what the previous Director of Administration was placed on. So I will not be supporting this change. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
And what's the reason why it's different than the previous?
Mr. McClure just explained that, but he can explain it again.
Well, the reason it's different is it was my error. I sent it over at the wrong.
No, so I'm saying why this pay grade is different than the previous administration's position at that.
Because this is the pay grade that I could get Mr. Dirtinger to come out from under Grand Central Station and come here and help me run the government. That's the deal I made with him. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I'd just like to say that I'm going to support this 100% because I know what it takes to get somebody out of one of those jobs and come here and work for a lot less money. So I'm 100% in support of this. Seeing no other discussion, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
No.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Passes by vote of seven to one.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Dirtinger, if you're here. I see you in the bag.
Oh.
We're going to move right along. I'm not going to have you come up and, you know, give us a speech. Pardon me?
Do you need seconds on these, or no?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No. At least we did that last night.
Okay, thanks.
All right. The next one we have is, again, the Personnel Committee met last night. We have a lot of these in a row, so I won't keep saying that. Director of Community and Economic Development, Mr. McGee, could you introduce the resolution, please?
Sure. Be it resolved by the North Hampton County Council that Tina Smith shall be confirmed in her appointment as Director of the Department of Community and Economic Development at a pay grade of Step Five, I'm sorry, Group Five, Step One A, salary $85,393, effective January 18, 2018. So moved.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on this particular one? We talked about it last night for two hours. All right, seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passes by vote of eight to zero.
All right, and again, the next part of the agenda is the Director of Fiscal Affairs, Mr. McGee.
Be it resolved by the North Hampton County Council that Stephen J. Barron Jr. shall be confirmed in his appointment as Director of the Department of Fiscal Affairs at a pay grade Group Six, Step One A, salary of $93,626, effective January 18, 2018. So moved.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Any discussion from council? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Passes by vote of eight to zero.
Okay, the next one on the agenda is the Director of Human Resources. Mr. McGee, introduce the resolution, please.
Be it resolved by the North Hampton County Council that Elizabeth Kelly shall be confirmed in her appointment as Director of the Department of Human Resources at a pay grade Group Five, Step Five E, salary of $101,832, effective January 18, 2018. So moved.
Okay, any council discussion on this one? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Passes by vote of eight to zero.
Next one on the agenda is North Hampton County Solicitor. Mr. McGee, please.
Be it resolved by the North Hampton County Council that Sue Wondolowski shall be confirmed in her appointment as Director of the Department of Human Services at a pay grade Group Six, Step One A, salary of $93,626, effective January 18, 2018. So moved.
All right, I skipped one, so I'll go back then after this. Any discussion on this? Sorry. Call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passes by vote of eight to zero.
Who am I missing? Was that Human Services?
Yeah.
Public Works. Okay, next one on the agenda is Public Works. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Sorry, I skipped ahead on one for you.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. All right. Let me make sure I'm on the right one here.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. Be it resolved by the North Hampton County Council that Michael Emili shall be confirmed in his appointment as Director of the Department of Public Works at a pay grade Group Six, Step One A, salary of $93,626, effective January 18, 2018. So moved.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Passes by vote of eight to zero.
Okay, H. North Hampton County Public Defender, Mr. McGee. I'm a solicitor. Okay. You've got my paper screwed up here. Jeez, oh, whiz. We haven't done like 27 of these in a row before. Solicitor.
Did I miss one? All right. Okay. All right. Be it resolved by the North, are we good?
Yeah.
Be it resolved by the North Hampton County Council that Melissa Pammer Rudis shall be confirmed in her appointment as County Solicitor at a pay grade Group Seven, Step One A, of a salary of $63,124, effective January 18, 2018. So moved.
All right, any discussion on my screw-up? Any discussion on the nomination? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
All right, now we're at the Public Defender, right? Because I want to get it approved right away.
Yeah.
Next one is North Hampton County Public Defender.
Be it resolved by the North Hampton County Council that Nuria Deluzio shall be confirmed in her appointment as Chief Public Defender at pay grade Group Eight, Step One A, of a salary of $62,972, effective January 18, 2018. So moved.
Any discussion on the nomination? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
And Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
All right, I have, next on the agenda is Consideration of Personnel Request Resolution A, Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Division. Mr. McGee, introduce the resolution, please.
Be it resolved, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council.
Yes.
Yeah, I just screwed you guys all up. Sorry. Thank you.
Continue.
Yeah, I don't know what you did.
Okay, go ahead.
Continue. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Aging Care Manager Two, pay grade of PS35, salary of $39,466, shall be eliminated, and one full-time position of Aging Care Manager Three, pay grade of PS37B, salary of $43,471, shall be created in the Department of Human Services. Area Agency on Aging Division Protective Services Unit, effective January 18th, 2018. And be it further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the one full-time position of Fiscal Officer Two, pay grade HS38A, salary of $46,357, shall be eliminated, and one full-time position of Accountant Two, pay grade HS38A, salary of $46,357, shall be created in the Department of Human Services. Area Agency on Aging Division, effective January 18th, 2018. So moved.
Are there any discussion on this resolution? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
Next thing on the agenda is the Department of Human Services Children, Youth, and Families Division. Mr. McGee, introduce the resolution, please.
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Caseworker Manager Two, pay grade HS42B, salary of $55,281, shall be created in the Department of Human Services. Children, Youth, and Families Division, effective January 18th, 2018. So moved.
Any discussion from County Council? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
All right, before we move on to Agenda Item Number Three, I'd like to congratulate everybody on their appointments to their respective positions, and I hope that we have a great working relationship between County Council and everybody that's gotten their new positions. Thank you to all you guys. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay. Number three, now that we're in order again. Consideration of Gracestale Union Employees Pay Scale for 2018 Resolution. Again, we had this last night in our Personnel Committee, and Mr. McGee, would you please introduce the resolution?
Certainly. Whereas the Northampton County Council adopted Resolution Number 131-2017, which adopted the Gracestale Union's 2018 pay scale, and whereas on January 2nd, 2018, the Department of Human Resources indicated that Gracestale Union satisfies their obligation to enact an extra 0.5% cost of living allowance for a total COLA of 2.5% instead of the only 2% if sick usage remainder under a certain amount. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the 2018 pay scale for the Gracestale Union employees shall be revised to read as indicated on the attached document. So moved.
All right, thank you, Mr. McGee. Any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Consideration of Emergency Contract Resolution for HT Lions. Mr. Heckman had his committee meeting yesterday. I'd like you to read it in, introduce it.
All right. Whereas the Administrative Code, Section 1312, on 12, Emergency Procurement states, notwithstanding any other provision of this code, county executive or his designee may make or authorize others to make emergency procurements when there exists a threat.
Sorry. When there exists a threat to public health, welfare, or safety under emergency conditions, provided that such emergency procurements shall be made with such competition as is practical under the circumstances. The county executive shall present an emergency procurement notice to the council president regarding the specifics of the emergency and the need to avoid the public procurement process. And whereas on January 8th, 2018, the county executive requested that an emergency contract be awarded to HT Lions for the repair of drain lines for the showers, tubs, and floor drains at Gracestale, not to exceed $44,880 per attachment number one. Now therefore it is resolved that the Northampton County, that Northampton County concurs with the administration to award an emergency contract to HT Lions. So introduced. This is discussed, that's the committee meeting. Is there any discussion on this further? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
Next thing on the agenda is Consideration of the Pennsylvania Act 106 Compliant Resolution A, the Appointment of a Risk Manager, and I believe you only have to read therefore be it resolved, Mr. Heckman, instead of the entire thing.
Thank God.
Therefore, it is hereby resolved that the county shall hereby accept the following level of security to cover public officials, including members of County Council and the county executive. Crime coverage through the county's insurance policy with PCORP, which covers all county officials and employees for fraud, embezzlement, theft, forgery, and other criminal acts up to $1 million per occurrence. A wire transfer, too, a wire transfer bond in the amount of $4 million, which provides additional security above the maximum of $1 million crime coverage under PCORP for certain county employees authorized to initiate wire transfers. Three, a treasurer's bond in the amount of $72,000, which is coverage required by the state based on revenue collection levels, and is still required since Act 106 does not apply to county treasurers acting as tax collectors as provided in Section Four of the local tax collection law. A magisterial district justice bond in the amount of $55,000 per magisterial district justice, since Act 106 does not apply to those officials. So moved. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
Okay, number six. All right, number six, Consideration of a Donation to Division, no.
No, no.
Okay, I'm sorry. Forming Content. This is a long one.
Well, yeah, this is just a normality, really. But it just makes sure the Director of Administration is in charge of the.
Okay, Mr. Heckman?
Do I just do the therefore again?
I guess you would. Yeah, I would do the therefore.
My time was much more informal.
All right, therefore, I will start. Therefore, it is hereby resolved that the county shall hereby adopt the following procedure for compliance with the provisions of the Act. One, county council is designating the Director of Department of Administration or his or her designee to serve as a risk manager for purposes of this Act. Two, the Director of Administration or his/her designee is hereby designed, designated, to compile and submit information to county council prior to close of every calendar year as to the amount of security that the risk manager recommends that the county maintain during the succeeding year and otherwise to provide the information as set forth below to enable county council to place into force the bond and insurance required by the Act for the succeeding year. Three, in the course of performing the duties assigned under above, the Department of Administration and the Solicitor shall confer to determine the form and content of the bond and insurance would comply with the provisions of the Act. Four, at least two weeks prior to the close of every calendar year, the Department of Administration shall present to County Council for its consideration and approval the form and amount of the required security, together with a recommendation as to the bond or policy satisfying the criteria set forth in the Act. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Heckman. Is there any discussion on this? Call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
And Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
All right, number six, we have a Consideration of a Donation to the Division of Information and Referral Emergency Services, Emergency Services Crisis and Fund Resolution, and if we've got to ask Ms. Laurie Fargo-Hefner to introduce the resolution.
Whereas Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 20210, provides that County Council shall have among others the following powers, to accept on behalf of the county any gifts of real property and to provide for the acceptance by any agency on behalf of the county of any other gifts. And now therefore be it resolved by Northampton County Council that it does hereby accept the donation of $250 to the Division of Information and Referral slash Emergency Services for their Emergency Services Crisis Fund from Pierce Star LLC.
Thank you. Is any discussion on this item? Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
Okay, number seven, we have a Consideration of Article 13 Contract Approval Resolutions. A is T O C Services LLC and Steve's Removal Services. And I call on Mr. Heckman to introduce the resolution. Therefore, be it resolved.
Okay. Now therefore be it resolved that Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with T O C Services LLC and Steve's Removal Services. So moved.
All right, we had a discussion on this last night. Does anybody want to add anything to the discussion of the board? All in, call for a vote, I'm sorry.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
Next thing we have is a Consideration of Painting Contract with Jupiter Painting for Four Bridges. Mr. Heckman, could you introduce the resolution?
Okay. Now therefore be it resolved that Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Jupiter Painting Contracting Company, Inc., for a painting of Northampton County Bridges Number 58, Number 72, Number 83, Number 125, Number 160. So moved.
Thank you, sir. And we had a discussion about this last night at our committee meeting. Are there any other thoughts or input? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
And Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
All right, next one is Lehigh Valley Workforce Investment Board, Inc., DBA Workforce Board, Lehigh Valley. We discussed this last night. Mr. Heckman, could you please introduce the resolution?
Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Lehigh Valley Workforce Investment Board, Inc., DBA Workforce Board, Lehigh Valley for Career Service Training at the Jail. So moved. DBA?
DBA, Mr. Jeff.
Doing business as.
Doing business as.
Doing business as, okay.
I thought it was Aston Martin model.
It's just a DB, DB8 or DB12.
DB8, DB8, I thought it was a prototype.
All right, any other discussion besides Aston Martins? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
All right, you're not off the hook yet, Ron. Next one is Wind Gap Electric. Could you please introduce the resolution?
Okay, let me get the last one. Here we are. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to